Good evening, we welcome you all to the November 23rd, 2009 Troy City Council Meeting. And we ask if you have a cell phone or electronic device that you turn it off at this time because it bothers our sound system, even if it's on vibration. So please turn those off, thank you. This evening, we're pleased to have with us Pastor Scott Leda Pure from Zion Christian Church, and he will provide the invocation, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Please rise, Pastor.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for the freedoms that we enjoy. We thank you in this Thanksgiving season for all that you've done for us and the blessings that we enjoy as Americans and citizens of Troy. And Father, I ask for wisdom today for our mayor, our council members, and Lord, all of the agenda items that they have to discuss, dealing with budget and everything that's going on in our world. We need your wisdom. So we ask that your strength, that your wisdom would be upon this meeting, and everything that's said and done, and that your grace and peace would move mightily. We thank you for all of this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Do we have the roll call, Mrs. Beth Almey?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini. Fleming.
Here.
Howarlag. Kerwin.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Quorum present.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Fleming.
I move the resolution that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilwoman Beltramini and Councilman Martin Howarlag, due to being out of town.
Do we have a second? Moved by Councilwoman, by Mayor Protem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we excuse Councilwoman Robin Beltramini and Councilman Martin Howarlag for being out of town. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Beth Almey?
Mayor Schilling.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Motion passes. This evening, we begin with three presentations, and our first one is on behalf of the City of Troy Employees Casualty for a Cause Program for July and August. Our Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart is going to present the check, and it goes to the Leader Dogs for the Blind and--
Look who's here.
Oh, oh, it's a zombie.
What's his name?
Fable.
I have to come down. That's fable. Well, we're all gonna be outstaged.
I think so.
Our mayor is a dog person. But as the mayor stated, the employees do a casual for a cause, and we always pick a wonderful cause, and for July and August, we pick Leader Dogs for the Blind. So it's my pleasure tonight to present you with a check for, well, two checks. One's a personal check from an employee, but we have $970 for Leader Dogs for the Blind, because your mission is to enhance the lives of people who are blind and visually impaired. And why don't you say a couple words and introduce fable?
I would love to say a few words. Leader Dogs-- Leader Dogs has been in the area since 1939, and we encourage anybody who wants to see what we do to come and visit us. We're on the corner of Avon and Rochester Road. At any given time, we probably have about 300 dogs on site. We have 400 puppy raisers in the metro area, plus Wisconsin, Iowa, some in Texas, some in Canada. Puppy raisers get cute puppies like this when they're about six weeks old, and they raise them for a year and turn them back into Leader Dogs, and they begin their training. And they furnish mobility and independence to about 300 students a year from all over the world. So the donations by the employees will certainly get put to good use, and on behalf of Leader Dogs, I thank you so much. Thank you. Very much.
I know he wants to stay, or she wants to stay.
God, he smells my dog Aristotle. Our next presentation is from the schoolchildren. It is the Red Ribbon Program. They do this each year, and it is always so wonderful to see the children arrive. So if they'd like to come up, please.
Good evening, Mayor Schilling and councilmembers. Each year, Troy Families for Safe Homes and the Troy School District supports and sponsors the Red Ribbon Campaign. This year, Troy Families for Safe Homes held a Red Ribbon Song Contest, and the winner of the song contest was Mrs. Andrea Moon and her fourth grade students from Martell Elementary. I would like to recognize Ms. Andrea Moon and honor her with a certificate for all her hard work. So Andrea, would you please come forward? And then to conclude our presentation, Carol Liskey, who is an eighth grade student from Larson, will read her Red Ribbon speech.
So nice to have you here, Carol, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Schilling, councilmen and women. I'm Carol Liskey, and it is an honor to be here tonight representing Troy students. Each fall, Troy Families for Safe Homes supports the Red Ribbon Campaign, which is now the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation, reaching millions of young people. Red Ribbon Week was started after DEA agent Enrique Kiki Cameron was killed while working undercover to keep drugs out of America. So Troy students were asked to honor the memory of this American hero and others like him by pledging to make healthy choices every day and helping their friends do the same. The purpose of Red Ribbon Week is to equip the youth and their parents with what they need to build a healthy future unspoiled by drugs. By reaching one child, one family, one community, we're building a better future for our city, state, and nation. As we take part in the Red Ribbon Campaign each year, just know that we are building hope, which is the best prevention of all. So now, Ms. Mayor, it is our privilege to present you with our pledge, take a visible stand against substance abuse. Thank you.
Thank you so much, it's great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, I'm here.
Thank you so much. Thank you. This is always a very special night for us, and we thank all the children and the parents and the teachers that have been involved with the program. It's always very moving to see the children come each year, and we like to share all of the signatures and names with each other, and it is a very special program. We thank everyone for being involved. The next item is a graduating class. This happens to be our Citizens Academy Class 14, and they're going to receive their certificates of graduation tonight, and I need to go down again to the front for this one. No music. We usually have the kind of circumstance here, so we'll, at the end, we'll have you sing. Our first graduate this evening is Don Barnes.
He's the only one who's happy with a yellow clue.
Oh, dear.
He's happy with a yellow clue.
Well, at least he's following all of the rules about when you're not feeling well, stay away. Thank you, Don, for not passing it on.
He told me to watch at home.
Right. We will make sure he gets the certificate. Craig Chamberlain, congratulations.
Thank you.
And the pictures are for the graduates. Greg Doan. You're doing--
Sorry.
And Tina Doan. Now, I thought about maybe we should have couples come up together, but they each, they each did their own work, so they each get their own certificate. Congratulations. Daniel Duvan.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Belinda Duvan.
Carol Fuchinari.
Fuchinari. How are you? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Kathy Fuchinari. And I see Kath-- Kathy and I see each other at Kroger's all the time. We just happen to be on the same shopping cycle, groceries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sue.
That's it for the call.
Sue Casemira. Casemira--
Casemirzak.
Casemirzak. That's fine, yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And Ted Casemirzak.
No worries.
Thank you, congratulations. Is that the last of the couples?
That's the last.
And I want to know if the couples quizzed each other after they learned things at the various sessions?
Absolutely.
Ah, see, okay. Beth Mesicar.
No, our husband's here in the attic, so we learned a lot.
Congratulations. Ah. Okay, congratulations. Kim Rositer. Congratulations.
Very much.
Oh, thank you very much.
Jeffrey Sarna. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And Tony Sarna.
Robert.
Now, there was some quizzing going on there, I think.
We've never had settling.
Karen Yelder. Yeah, nice to see you again. How are you? Congratulations. Diane Zeg-- Zegma Toovich. Zegma Toovich. It is just like it looks, yes. Congratulations. You probably get that all the time when you're in the cities. One of the things that the Citizens Academy graduates always say each year, and it's so gratifying, is that they've learned so much, and that they're so amazed at all the information they garner. And then they pass it on to their neighbors, friends, relatives, people all around, so it just goes out, you know, to everyone else. And we do appreciate you taking the class, because we think that that is a good way to educate people on the complexities of each department, and so we're glad that you've enjoyed it, and thank you for participating. And for Cindy Stewart for coming up with the idea, and Ken Forley.
There are no carryover items or public hearings this evening, and so we go right
to the public comment section of the agenda. And if you picked up a hard copy of the agenda, you will note that at the front of the agenda, right after the cover page, there is an entire page devoted to members of the public and visitors, and explains our rules and procedures for that. And that is that the members of the public may speak on items that are, if they are a presenter, a petitioner, and they have requested an item that is within the agenda, they are allowed a 15-minute presentation time. If a member of the public, not a petitioner of an item, is allowed to speak for up to five minutes on any public hearing item, but we have no public hearings tonight, but public hearings are always open to all the public speaking if they wish to. And any member of the public, not a petitioner of an item, will be allowed to speak for up to five minutes to address postponed, regular business, or consent agenda items, or any other item as permitted under the Open Meetings Act during the public comment portion of the agenda. City Council may waive the requirements of this section by a majority of the council members. And city council may wish to schedule a special meeting for agenda items that are related to topics where there is significant public input anticipated. Through a request of the chair and a majority vote of the council, public comment may be limited when there are 15 or more people signed up to speak, either on a public hearing item or for the public comment period of the agenda. It was requested by members of council that for the first few weeks that we're on this new rules and procedure of Rule 16, that I read that aloud to the public each time. And then after people become familiar with it, it'll still appear in the booklet, but I won't have to be reading it out loud every time. We do not have 15 people that signed up, so therefore we will proceed. And our first member of the public that wishes to speak is Audrey Zembruski. So I call Audrey Zembruski forward. Good evening, Audrey.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and Mr. Zurlak. I watched when you did this the first time at home. I wasn't here, and as many of you that really know me know, I never come up to speak on anything unless somebody has said something that has disturbed me sitting there and listening. And I do not know why this had to be changed. I think our rules and procedures that we did before were a lot more clear, that if you wanted to get up and speak when someone says something, you could put your hand up, and you were called on. And doing this really takes the whole thing away. I don't know whose idea this was, but I think it's wrong. I watched it. It looked like a circus at home. And I always tell everybody, hey, if you really want to know what the council is like, go to the council meetings. And I've been coming for quite a few years. All of you know that. Okay, that was what I had to say.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt.
Not supposed to look at your ring. That was worn.
Good evening.
Uh--
Mr. Reinhardt, you're fine. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for letting me speak, Mayor. And as you heard on the radio, I'm not blaming you for none of this. I've just got to take control of it, okay, somehow. Okay, in H3, I just want to say, where's the 40K on '05? Where, how come the voters taking longer to produce that contract like it's supposed to be? 107, full-time zoning and full-time street manager, he's already a part-time city manager. How does he have all this time to do this stuff? 108, I'm telling them to move out of City of Troy as I acquire their addresses. H4, uh, sounds pretty complicated, and I have no idea what you're doing, but it has the word "if" in there two or three times. It's kind of hard to pass something with the word "if" in there, unless you guys just want to slide your responsibilities continually. Also, too, you mentioned this Pink Rose thing. This is a public thing, and then you've got the names. The number's wiped out. This is a public thing, so apparently there, there's something wrong, because if a public, don't put your public numbers out. Apparently, you've taken the money and taken it. Because all my 501(c)(3)C's, which I have a few of, by the way, okay, if it's probably, I got to put it out on public what I'm asking for, tax incentives in other states, okay? But you got, if somebody did this, I don't know who it is, but it's, this is like this, Mayor. They're making you look foolish, and then the city looks foolish. They're not supplying you with the right stuff. And as far as these LLCs go, there's a website that's on there that has most of the LLCs spelled out real clear. It's put out by Clark Hill, by the way, okay? I don't know if you can find it, but it's one keystroke, and it's the entire operation, what they're going to do for the whole United States, okay? Because that's what I do. I look for facts and try to find out why does $2 trillion go on the other side of I-75 and real bankrupt on this side. And I apologize for my raising of my voice, but don't worry. I bought enough band time. I'm going to have a 24-hour chat room to try to fix Troy. I've also bought a couple of years' worth of IT stuff, so pretty soon I'll be able to parrot this thing. At the same time you're talking, I'll be talking to my people. So I appreciate the fact that you made me think. General Motors came out of the way. Don't ever make me think. I was called the professor at General Motors. They brought me in for real hard problems, and I solved them. They had to correct my solvability, but I solved them. So I hope that you guys could solve this. And as far as that 16-mile at Adams accident, that's purely what I think is a programmed, unimproved street corner. That street corner should look like 16 in Rochester, but somehow that corner looks trabby, and instead of putting three lanes down Rochester, why don't you improve Adams? Because if we had to build that 18 expressway, exit at 18, what happened to the Adams? That's the next one down. Because it's programmed disintegration of this city using legal terms. That's no problem. My dad had a bag of them. He was a CPA. He could form a corporation like that. He's off and started again. So I'm on your side, and whoever that unknown blogger is, is picking on these people unnecessarily. The whole city's messed up. These two people had nothing to do with it. All right? That's my point of view, and you guys have a nice day, and please get this city together.
Gerald Stager.
Madam Mayor, what name did you call?
Pardon?
What name did you call?
I called Gerald Stager. Is that correct?
Why? Is there Gerald Stager here? I'm Gerard Stager.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I guess I need to put my glasses on.
I know the feeling. I came to talk about the rule of procedure change about that Troy residents are no longer allowed to comment on agenda items that come up before the public, and I'm deeply disturbed by it, and I want to talk about that briefly. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, when I first got out of college, I worked for SEPTA. SEPTA's now known as SMART. It's the Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transit. And we had some budget cutbacks going on back then, and they had public hearings. And I thought, what is a public hearing? What is this all about? And they encouraged us to go to the public hearings. So I went to one down in Old Parker, Ferndale, and I was shocked by what I saw. There were people, they were mad, they were angry, they were loud, they were obnoxious. They would pound their fist on the podium, and all they would do is complain and complain and complain. And I thought, what a waste of time. There are a lot of people like that. Then one gentleman got up, and he said, you want to cut the bus route on 12 Mile Road. If you do that, I can't get to work anymore. Could you at least have some buses running on 12 Mile? I'll get to work an hour, hour and a half early if I have to, but could you run some buses on 12 Mile? And sure enough, SEPTA changed their rules, and they allowed the buses on 12 Mile. And then I realized, well, something good does come out of public hearings. You have the loud, bombastic, obnoxious people who want to complain, but you have good people who have valid concerns. That's the price of democracy. With the change in the rules of procedure, somebody could propose a change in zoning, a change in easement, something that affects us who live in Troy. Somebody could propose a toxic waste hazard in our, beyond our backyard. We don't get to comment on it. The developer gets to comment on it. He might not live in Troy. City employee gets to talk about it. He might not live in Troy. We don't get to talk about it. It doesn't seem right to me. We just had an election, and I've got literature from, from Ms. McGinnis and Mr. Slater. You never mentioned this issue in the campaign that I'm aware of. It's not in your literature that I've got here tonight, but it's the first thing you voted on was to limit it, and I really don't think it was fair to do that to us. I realize that there are--
Madam Mayor, what name did you call?
Pardon?
What name did you call?
I called Gerald Stager. Is that correct?
Why? Is there Gerald Stager here? I'm Gerard Stager.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I guess I need to put my glasses on.
I know the feeling. I came to talk about the rule of procedure change about that Troy residents are no longer allowed to comment on agenda items that come up before the public, and I'm deeply disturbed by it, and I want to talk about that briefly. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, when I first got out of college, I worked for SEPTA. SEPTA is now known as SMART. It's the Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transit. And we had some budget cutbacks going on back then, and they had public hearings. And I thought, what is a public hearing? What is this all about? And they encouraged us to go to the public hearings. So I went to one down in Old Parker, Ferndale, and I was shocked by what I saw. There were people, they were mad, they were angry, they were loud, they were obnoxious, they would pound their fist on the podium, and all they would do is complain and complain and complain. And I thought, what a waste of time. There are a lot of people like that. Then one gentleman got up, and he said, you want to cut the bus route on 12 Mile Road? If you do that, I can't get to work anymore. Could you at least have some buses running on 12 Mile? I'll get to work an hour, hour and a half early if I have to, but could you run some buses on 12 Mile? And sure enough, SEPTA changed their rules, and they allowed the buses on 12 Mile. And then I realized, well, something good does come out of public hearings. You have the loud, bombastic, obnoxious people who want to complain, but you have good people who have valid concerns. That's the price of democracy. With the change in the rules of procedure, somebody could propose a change in zoning, a change in easement, something that affects us who live in Troy. Somebody could propose a toxic waste hazard in our, beyond our backyard. We don't get to comment on it. The developer gets to comment on it. He might not live in Troy. City employee gets to talk about it. He might not live in Troy. We don't get to talk about it. It doesn't seem right to me. We just had an election, and I've got literature from Ms. McGuinness and Mr. Slater. You never mentioned this issue in the campaign that I'm aware of. It's not in your literature that I've got here tonight, but it's the first thing you voted on was to limit it, and I really don't think it was fair to do that to us. I realize that there are problems in city council meetings, and somebody drags it out too much, maybe you limit it to three agenda items, but I don't think it's right to take away our right to talk on the issues. It's a sensitive issue, but I want to mention the personal protection order without getting into details. And apparently, it was based only on comments everyone heard at the city council meetings. I was at every one. At SEPTA, people would be loud, they'd pound the podium, they'd be angry, they'd be mad. I wouldn't want to present myself like that, but nobody slapped a personal protection order on them that would prevent them from speaking in public. Doesn't mean I liked what I heard, doesn't mean I thought it should go on, but I'm concerned that if somebody expresses their opinion, even if they're loud or angry, that they're not allowed to speak, who will be next? Who will be the next man or woman not allowed to speak? So I asked, did you please consider the change in the agenda item, that you go back to the way it was, or at least allow at least a few agenda items to speak on? And if you don't feel that way, you're having an election in February anyway, why don't you put it on the ballot and see what the people of Troy think about losing their ability to speak on agenda items? And I thank you.
James, I'll make a clarification as you're coming up. You may speak on any postponed, regular business, consent agenda item, or other item that is not on the agenda. And if there were public hearings tonight, you would have been able to speak on public hearings also. So you can speak on any of those items for your five minutes, and we won't start the clock till you start.
Okay. I'm wide open.
Yes, thank you.
Well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate all the new elected city council people, and yourself, Mayor. First of all, I have three different things that I have recorded to myself to talk to and suggest to the council. The first one is council meetings and cable. The council meetings are on cable three or four times a week, and are all on at different hours during these days. My suggestion is that these meetings be placed on the menu, on the cable menu, showing the days that the council is meeting and the time. The second item that I have, this will be based on some of the previous meetings, based on the budget and so forth. My thoughts are that the budget is just a lot of wishy-washy, nothing concrete to put your fingers on, especially to vote on something. We don't know what we're going to vote on. My suggestion is, take your current budget, whatever savings there are from the current budget, deduct it from the budget, and take a straight 10% cut, right across the board, from the top man to the temp worker. Now, you've got something to come back to us and say, well, this will do such and such, but we need money here, or we have too much money now. This can be adjusted, up or down. That's all I wanted to say about that. It's just stimulation. Another one is, the city manager made the comment about consulting, and this was regarding some of the items on his agenda. Now, as an individual that's city manager, and he admits, and we know that he was appointed, that he also has a firm, as a consulting firm. Now, what he said was, I have a friend who's a consultant, and I will talk to my friend to give us advice based on this reorganization program. Now, that don't look right to me. One of the questions that was, while doing the presentation of the consultant, privatization was brought up, and the 40% figure was mentioned. Then one of the council people asked, well, can you explain how you can afford to save us 40%? The answer was, oh, that's very difficult to answer. It's very, very complicated. Well, then why promote it? Privatization, based on my conversations with individuals in the public, nobody, especially in the business section, nobody is telling me privatization saves them 40%. Nobody. And they can't see it coming. Now, it's just too difficult to explain. Now, the city manager also said, he made specific phone calls to potential contractors, builders, whatever. And his answer was that they all said they could save us 40%. Now, what is this saying? Are all these jobs that are scheduled, are they going to go out on a bid basis? If they go out on a bid basis, go over there, get the job, are we going to get a 40% discount? Let's have an explanation to these things. It's all gibberish, nothing factual. We have nothing to make a decision on. That's my, this, what I'm doing is stimulating thought, not only to ourselves here, but to the residents of Troy. We don't need that 1.9% mill increase. I've talked to people who've said, oh, we could afford a little increase. It wouldn't hurt me. One guy said, 250 bucks. He's okay with it. But then you talk to the guy from the other side of the track, and he's worried about that 1.9%. So that's why I say 10% across the board, and that covers everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Savage?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the city council. At the last meeting, I was talking about the Transit Center, and I didn't finish, so I would like to carry on talking about that. There is a lot to be said, so I may not get through it tonight. As some of you know, the traffic, safety, and public transportation has been a concern to me for many years, and now, avoiding waste of taxpayer money is critical. The reason I described the Detroit Transit Center was because it, like the Troy City Center, is supposed to be a part of a regional system that links everything together, but it is not working. You would need to take a cab to or from the Detroit Bus Center to get to either the rail station, the River Terminal, the Greyhound Bus Terminal, or to the airport. It is not linked with any of these other forms of transportation. So if this so-called Area Transit Authority is supposed to be in charge of the whole thing, if they cannot get it together within the city, what chance would they have in the whole of southeast Michigan? Now, in terms of the Transit Center, and it's my belief that the basis of the free enterprise system is demand and supply. Over 100 years ago, the railroad companies saw a demand, and they built the railroads that built this country. If Amtrak could see enough demand, they would be funding this. There is a demand, however, for a superfast train from Ann Arbor to Chicago. That would, in time, create demand for transit links from Ann Arbor to Detroit, to Flint, to Lansing, and Toledo. And if you looked on the map of Michigan, you would see how obvious that would be. And also, it would be profitable from day one. There is a lot of people waiting for its fast link from Ann Arbor to Chicago. Now, I've always been a proponent of mass transit. In May of the year 2000, the very beginning of our century, I attended a town hall-type meeting in this room to discuss the widening of ICE-75 through Oakland County. This room was crowded, and everyone that addressed the meeting was opposed to the widening of the highway and in favor of mass transit, with the exception of Mr. Carradino, the consultant for Michigan Department of Transport. So I'm wondering, where is Mr. Carradino now? This is 10 years. And the end of study, the cost to taxpayers for the study alone, over $2 million. $2 million, and what did we get out of it? 10 years later, we've still got that six-page pamphlet. So I'm going to read just a couple of little items from this. And it says, the rapid transit. The transit concept's been evaluated as a high-performance system running on Woodward Avenue from Pontiac to the Jefferson Avenue downtown, and it would include 28 stations, a park of ride lots that stops north of and include in the Michigan State Fairgrounds. Nowhere in this was there any mention, a $2 million study, it didn't mention a transit center for Troy. So I'm wondering how it got missed. So it's my feeling that this transit center is not about moving people at all. It's about giving taxpayer money to consulting companies such as the Carradino Group. As far as I know, it would be interesting to see what kind of profits they're making. We are paying lobbyists $4,000, as far as I know, and still are paying $4,000 a month to bribe politicians for something that the people of Troy do not want, they don't need, and they can't afford. Can I finish the page?
Mr. Savage, finish up, yes, quickly.
Okay. A few years ago, we paid $50,000 for the Troy Future-In Study. And where did the Transit Center fit into that study? It was not even mentioned, and that was only a few years ago. So what I'm getting at is why are we spending all this money on studies which we don't get anything? Not a stone has been turned for all these studies, millions of dollars. So it seems that while we are going broke, we are making consulting companies very rich. Thank you.
Mr. Savage? Craig Chamberlain is next.
Madam Mayor, council members, Craig Chamberlain, 10-year Troy resident, speaking in recognition of the Troy Citizens Academy. Thank you to Cindy Stewart for all of her efforts. Thank you to the department heads who stayed so late answering all those questions from a group that asked a lot of questions. Thanks to the Citizens Academy, I am now a better-informed citizen and voter. Every day on my way to work, I drive past the Historical Museum. Until this academy, I had no idea what wonderful outreach and educational programs that organization presents. The director of the Nature Center really impressed me, and I can see how she so, would so much inspire children. The fire department, I didn't know it was volunteer. I feel good about it being volunteer because I see the efficiency. I'm pleased with the insurance rating that we get. I understand that they're able to get more people on site than other surrounding communities with a professional fire department. I encountered city staff who take pride in their work, have years of experience, because I've been in those positions for so many years, and who have efficiency always in mind. So I'm very pleased with what I have found out about Troy. I think that the city is going to have a burden of proof to communicate what that efficiency is to the rest of the citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, did you sign up next?
It's a tough act to follow here, following.
Pardon?
This is a tough act to follow.
Yes.
Following Craig here. Well, my husband and I have been in the Citizens Academy for the past 10 weeks, and we learned a great deal about the mechanics of our city, in addition to developing a deep respect for the efficiency, the creativity, the courtesy, and the pride demonstrated by our city staff. We've been telling our friends and neighbors what a wonderful program this is, and many of them are interested in taking this class. Much of the credit goes to Cindy Stewart, who's done a wonderful job putting it together and making sure that the participants have a solid understanding of each department. This program educates the public. We now understand that those who claim that all we need to do is cut the fat really don't understand what stellar management we have. There's very, very little fat to cut. It also inspires the graduates to offer their talents and skills to the city in various volunteer opportunities on committees and boards. Unfortunately, I understand at the current time, no future sessions are planned. The loss of the opportunity to provide the citizens with this insight and the loss of the pool of volunteers this class creates would be a waste. I would like you to ask, I'd like to ask you to consider the contribution this program makes to the community, the contribution Cindy Stewart in Community Affairs is making, and to ask you to please make sure more of our citizens will have this opportunity. It's worth raising the fee to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the Troy City Council, I come to you as a former citizen of Troy, addressing an issue that is related to current issues that are going on in the city of Troy. And how I'll start out is by asking, when did the Troy Police Department start turning a blind eye to illegal felony possession of taser weapons and decide not to charge anybody if they are in possession of illegal tasers? In Michigan, under the Michigan Penal Code, Act 328 of 1931, Chapter 750, Section 224(a), states, "A person shall not sell, offer for sale, or possess in this state a portable device or weapon from which an electric current, impulse, wave, or beam is designed to incapacitate, temporarily injure, or kill." It goes on to say that a person who violates this section is guilty of a felony punishable by imprisonment for not more than four years or a fine of not more than $2,000 or both. The law does not say a person shall or may be guilty, but it says is guilty. I have a copy of that statute right here with me, if any members of the council need to see it. You may ask where I am going with this. On April 25, 2006, I sent a letter to the Troy Police Department, the Troy City Attorney's Office, the Oakland County Sheriff, the Oakland County Prosecutor, Michigan State Police, and Michigan Attorney General's Office. I informed the aforementioned agencies that Richard Havas, who happens to be my father, had acquired and had in his possession illegal tasers. He is a resident and a business owner here in the city of Troy. My letter was received by the Chief of Police at the time, Charles Kraft, on April 26, 2006. This is a copy of the letter here, stamped with the Chief's Office Received stamp. Chief Kraft at the time directed then-Captain Dane Slater to investigate the issue. Captain Slater's name is up here at the top of the letter. Since 2006 letter, Troy police officers met with Richard Havas and merely took possession of one of the tasers in Richard Havas's possession, with Richard Havas admitting that he had other tasers, but he could not find them. The Troy Police then walked away and did not charge Richard Havas. Officer Barry Whiteside gave Richard Havas his business card and merely told Richard Havas that when the other taser turns up, to just give him a call. I followed up on this case from April through June of this year, at times speaking with Captain Jerry Shirley. I recorded all of the conversations. I even tried to escalate this matter and address it with Chief Gary Mayer, but Chief Mayer refused to discuss this case, choosing not to get involved. When I addressed the Troy Police Department's lack of follow-up, lack of following the law, lack of charging Richard Havas with felony taser possession, as well as allowing Richard Havas to hide the remaining evidence, Captain Shirley belligerent told me, belligerently told me that the Troy Police Department, quote, "has no reason to believe that Richard Havas has any other tasers other than the one that Troy Police currently have in their possession." However, in the report written by Barry Whiteside on May 1, 2006, on the third paragraph, it says, quote, "Dr. Havas indicated that he could not locate the second weapon, but would search for it and surrender it to the writer. Writer provided a business card to Dr. Havas and requested that he contact writer as soon as the second weapon was located. Dr. Havas was very cooperative, no prosecution." That seems, we have a contradiction here between Captain Sherlock's statement and what's written here in the report. First, the Troy Police just gave Richard First, the Troy Police just gave Richard Havas the opportunity to hide the other taser and additional evidence. Second, under the law, Richard Havas did show that he was in possession of illegal tasers and should have been prosecuted. This is like a drug dealer with 100 pounds of cocaine who admits to having 100 pounds of cocaine, telling the police that he can only find 50 pounds, and the Troy Police Department telling the drug dealer to give them a call when the other 50 pounds of cocaine turn up without charging the drug dealer at all. This case has been buried and swept under the rug since 2006. I am asking this Troy City Council to investigate why and how the Troy Police Department bungled this case, refused to follow Michigan law regarding felony taser possession, and asked Chief Gary Mayer why Richard Havas was not charged as he should have been, thereby allowing Richard Havas to hide the remaining tasers and still be running around Troy with tasers in his possession. Our government is of the people, by the people, and for the people, and therefore, our government works for us, not the other way around. We are asked to trust our government and public officials, including police officers. We are expected to follow the laws, and as good citizens, when we see people breaking the law, report the lawbreakers, thereby expecting the lawbreakers to be punished. We teach our children that police officers are good guys. But what kind of example does it send and show the citizens and our children, I have two more sentences, our children of the city of Troy and the state of Michigan, when the Troy Police do not do their job, and Richard Havas is still allowed to possess remaining tasers, hide evidence, and is never prosecuted? Thank you for your time.
May I ask you a question, Mr. Havas? What relationship is Richard Havas to you?
He is my father.
And you say that you have evidence that he has additional tasers?
Yes, he's admitted here in police report twice, once back in May of 2006, and once recently when police went and followed up with him again April of this year, in 2009.
Has he admitted to you that he has tasers?
I've seen them.
Okay, thank you.
If any council member needs to see a copy of the reports, I have two copies here.
You're welcome to give a copy to the clerk of any information that you wish to present.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone that we've missed that wishes to speak in the public comment section? Yes, Mr. Witt, John Witt?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, John Witt. And tonight, I'd like to talk about the issue of leadership in the context of what has happened in the city government over the past three months. Now, the quality of leadership can make or break any organization. For example, Oakland County, led by the strong leadership of County Executive L. Brooks-Patterson, has a balanced budget for the next three years, no layoffs, and has even managed to enact 5% cross-the-board wage cuts in these tough economic times. So how exactly has our leadership in the city of Troy performed? To assess this, I'd first like to address the individual who got to us, who got us to where we are tonight, voting for a 29% $40 million tax increase. That is the city manager, Mr. Zurlag. Let me preface these comments by saying I have nothing personally against Mr. Zurlag, but am reverently assessing his actions as the chief administrator officer of the city. The course of actions over the last three months was set off in September, when Mr. Zurlag, without warning, released a stunning memo to the public and the media. This memo, which basically gave the city, basically gave the city an ultimatum, close several facilities and have mass layoffs or support a tax increase. This memo showed an astounding lack of leadership on Mr. Zurlag's part, that Mr. Zurlag would release shuttling out landish, extreme, unsophisticated memo, was extremely disappointing and unfair to the residents that are paying him over $220,000 a year to be their city manager. Let me be clear, I do not doubt that the city is facing a deficit of over $20 million over the next six years. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Zurlag's predecessor as city manager, had pulled us as much last year. The difference, though, was that Mr. Nelson was professional in the way he handled this with the residents and the city council. I only wish we had that type of professionalism from the current city manager. Maybe then we could handle this deficit in a reasonable and sensible fashion. Now, this memo has not only led us to this 29% $40 million tax increase proposal, but it has greatly harmed our city's image. A local newspaper compared our city's finances to those of Royal Oak Township, one of the most fiscally stressed communities in the entire state. Now, Mr. Zurlag, that is not exactly something you should be proud of. Mr. Zurlag's lack of leadership did not end with his memo, however. It has only continued. Contrary to what he would like us to believe, he has been quietly but steadily pushing this tax increase under the city council members and residents. For example, he told the council at several recent meetings that the city employee unions would be more likely to accept wage concessions if the city council supported a tax increase. Of course, this makes no logical sense, as the possibility of a tax increase, especially this tax increase, which will provide the city with over $15 million more than the entire six-year deficit, takes away much of the leverage the city has with the unions. Mr. Zurlag has also been pushing this tax increase on residents. His office has told residents that the 29% $40 million tax increase is necessary if they want to keep current levels of police and fire protection and keep city facilities open. Mr. Zurlag knows full well that a 29% $40 million tax increase is not needed to do this, but he insists on misinforming residents. However, as much as it seems to have arise, Mr. Zurlag has not set policy in this city, the city council does. Thus, I'm even more disappointed in the lack of leadership by this city council. That in these hard economic times, this council would continue new spending on risky and unnecessary ventures while expecting residents and businesses to fork over $40 million more of their hard-earned money is an insult to the residents of this city. Now, I know that Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and Councilman Horrak opposed this tax increase. I thank them for showing leadership by standing up for fiscal responsibility and common sense. However, the rest of the council showed no leadership, no responsibility, and no common sense. No matter what Mr. Zurlag, the mayor, or anyone else says, that is $40 million more that our residents and businesses could be spending on keeping their homes, keeping their businesses open, and providing for their families. Now, a recent spending decision by the city shows just how irresponsible the city has become in their spending habits. It was recently announced that the city will spend $90,000 on a drive-up book return for the library. This money for this unnecessary project includes $15,000 for a canopy to protect the book return. Let me get this straight. Residents who are struggling to keep a roof over their heads are expected to pay a tax increase to keep a roof over a book return? How out of touch have we become to the economic plight of our residents and businesses that we would even fathom spending money on such an unnecessary project? Now, Troy is a great city because of the great people that live in this community. And just too bad that the residents don't have the type of responsible city government that they deserve. I feel that this city government will only become responsible when the residents force you to do so. This will occur on February 23, when the residents will wisely reject this rash, unwarranted and unnecessary 29% $40 million tax increase. Hopefully, after this rebuke, the city government will finally begin to show some true leadership. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that I've missed that wished to speak in the public comment portion of the meeting? Seeing none, then we'll continue on with our business. The next item would be postponed items, but there are none. So we'll go to the regular business next. And next is appointments to boards and committees, and there are none scheduled, but there are nominations to appointments to boards and committees. And the first one is Maryland nominations for the Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA. I forward the following names to serve on the LDFA for a, of two council alternates. Dane Slater for city council alternate with a term expiring 11/11/2013, and Maureen McGinnis for city council alternate, term expiring 11/11/2013. Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kirwin, that we forward those names. By way of explanation, this, these committees usually, we rotate when council members serve on various boards and committees. So you will see that sometimes some council members have served at various times on a committee and then someone else will. But it's usually, as I said, done on a rotating basis. Mrs. Bartholomew, when we hit the vote?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. City council nominations? Anyone have any nominations? There was a list provided for items. We usually go in the order that they are, but not necessarily.
I see that there have been requests for reappointment from the Troy Days Committee. The chairs, Bob Burke and Michael Gonda have requested reappointment, and Sandy Magnus. So I would place those names in nomination for the Troy Days Committee.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we place in nomination the reappointment of Robert Burke and Michael Gonda and Sandy, Sandra Magnus for the Troy Days Committee. Are there any other nominations at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
I see that the Troy Days has recommended Jeff Stewart to continue his appointment, his appointed role on the Park and Rec Board, and I would place his name in nomination as the Troy Days Rep for Park and Rec.
Did she second?
Second is already there.
Oh, okay. Moved by, oh, it's already listed, yes, as Jeff Stewart for the Troy Days Rep. Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin and seconded by both Mayor Tem Fleming and Councilwoman Slater. Are there any others? Councilwoman Slater?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Mary Kirwin for the Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees/ Retirement Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust.
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we appoint Mary Kirwin as the city council representative to the Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees and Retirement, Retire Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would that be in the, the maker making that as an amendment to the main motion? Because we have an active main motion at this point in time, it would need to be an amendment, or it would need to wait until after we vote on this first motion, one or the other.
We can't do all of the nominations at the same time?
Not when you're making them in the form of a motion. If you were to make them and then make the motion afterwards and issue.
Ah, all right. Okay. You want to make it as an amendment?
I can wait.
At this point in time, you have a maker and a seconder, so it really does need to travel as an amendment, so we need to vote on that and then go to the amended main.
All right. That's fine. Any others at this time? Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes, and now Councilwoman Slater?
Mayor?
Yes.
That was the amendment. You have one vote on the main now, as amended, or you can continue to amend.
Do you wish to continue to amend, or do you want to do a separate motion? Councilwoman Slater?
I believe that was through the amendment to be included in the vote. Is that correct?
Correct. That amended the active main motion, which then lumps those two appointments together.
So we're all set? You just voted.
Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
We all set, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Now, we move to, let me turn the page here, to H.3, which is a proposed Troy City Code Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 98, the Criminal Code under 21, the purchase, consume, or possess alcohol in under 21, the PBT refusal.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Slater?
I'll support the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed. Vote? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. H.4 is the Candlewood Second Amended and Restated Consent Judgment.
Madam Mayor?
Is that Councilwoman Kirwin?
It's resolved, and the city council hereby approves the attached Second Amended and Restated Consent Judgment, Candlewood Hotel Company Incorporated and Rosso Development versus City of Troy Oakland County Circuit Court Case Number 80-207200ZZ. And be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the document and file it with the Oakland County Register of Deeds upon entry by the court, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. The vote, and thank you for the clarifications, Mrs. Bell, on that. Thank you. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. H.5 is the February 23, 2010 Special Election Proposed Milage Question. On the table is one slight change. I call council's attention to that, and we haven't really reached a decision on whether a majority wants the wording as printed in the agenda or with the change that is on the table with taking out more words and replacing. Councilwoman Slater?
Mayor? I would like to move the resolution and strike the words "but not limited to police" comma "fire" comma, and replace it with the words "public safety."
And then the wording, we probably should read the entire wording aloud for the public and then see if there's anyone that wishes to, you said, Mr. Zurlag, you had some people that wanted to speak on this item?
Yes, ma'am. There's really two issues here. One was that we were asked to take a look at modifying the original submittal to strike the term "but not limited to," and then just indicate that it's for general operating purposes, including public safety and quality of life purposes. That's fine with the administration. The 1.9 mils is about a subset of the entire cost of police, fire, public works, museum, library, nature center, and community center operations, so it doesn't really have that much of an impact. But if this clarifies it, we have no problem with it. Secondly, is that we spoke all along about a partnership between the city council, advancing a resolution to let the voters decide what kind of community they want, the employees by having concessions to prove that they are stakeholder in this matter as well, and then ultimately the voting public. And to that end, as opposed to me speaking on their behalf, I have some gentlemen here that would like to speak to you, and if they could come up and address you, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, staff. Sergeant Russ Harden with the, among the board directors for the Troy Command Officers Association, and we're interested in working as partners with the city council, the city administration, and the community to find solutions to the current budget situation. We're actively engaged in wage concession with Mr. Zurlag as well as the chief, and in fact, we've already met on three occasions. Representative of the city management team and the chief who addressed issues of the concessions is one part of solution to the problem. In addition, we have a general membership meeting scheduled for January, excuse me, December 2, specifically just to discuss wage concession with our membership.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, Russ.
Mayor, city council, Michael Geising, on behalf of the Troy Police Officers Association. First off, I'd like to thank you for your decision at this fast city council meeting. I know it was a tough decision. Secondly, I'd like to reassure you that we are actively meeting with Mr. Zurlag and his team, trying to work towards some type of solution to do our part for the his team, trying to work towards some type of solution to do our part for the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Evening, I'm Greg Schlesky, I'm President of Michigan Association of Police, I represent the police service aides and clerical employees, and don't have much else to add, but we are also engaged in discussions with Mr. Zerlag and the chief regarding concession.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Mike Beheilik, I represent AFSCME. We have five different divisions in the city, and two weeks ago, we met with Mr. Zerlag and his staff, and we are on the cusp, I believe, of making a nice announcement. We have a membership meeting next, in two weeks, and all the information will be handed to my membership, and they'll make the final decision, but we're trying our best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harden.
Thank you, Mike.
Anything else, Mr. Zerlag?
I just wanted you to hear directly from the employees, we'll also be putting out a assuming successful passage of this resolution, the administration will be putting out a website on this matter, we're being asked a lot of questions, and I think questions that were asked would be applicable not just to the person making the request, but to the entire community, and then we can later arrest a lot of the accusations that are made at this microphone as well.
I appreciate having an opportunity to state again that the solving of our problem with the finances of the less revenue coming in and the budget shortfall that we will see over the next five years is a combination of efforts, and no one has said that one piece of the puzzle is going to solve everything. And we, this council is trying to take it step by step, just as Mr. Zerlag and the staff are trying to take it step by step, so that we can reach the best combination of things that will help our community continue the services that they cherish and that they have come to enjoy in this community, and yet knowing that the revenue is not going to be as strong as it has been due to the downturn in the market. So I appreciate all of the pieces of the section that are coming together, and hopefully with an educational component, to explain all of that to the residents and businesses that are in the area, folks will come to understand why we're working in this endeavor.
That's correct. Also, what we'll have for you next week, I'm sorry, next meeting, is a content-neutral pamphlet, what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, and you'll be able to rule on that matter. Additionally, the city of Troy, I believe, was the first community in the state to mention what would happen over the next five years to our city if nothing happened. In fact, we were given accolades by Mr. Brooks Patterson for that endeavor, and if you read the papers on a daily basis, you see other cities are now following suit. Grand Rapids is looking at 125 layoffs effective January 1, so it's not an alarmist situation, it's a look at what will happen if we don't do anything.
Yes, I have been, every time I find an article in the newspaper that talks about some other cities and the things that they are doing, and how they are coming forward on this, I forward them on, so that we'll have a complete record of that, because I think that's important for people to know that. I see Mrs. Bloom signaling, I don't want her to think I haven't seen that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, just a couple of issues, Mayor. First of all, the language does have an A in there in the first sentence, it says "a new additional millage," that A should probably be eliminated, that was, I believe that that's a typographical error, so I would recommend that you remove that, because it's not "a new, it's "new additional millage," so that's the first issue. And then also, Mayor, I just wanted to state for the record that I have not, I know that there was a request to amend the language, I have not yet gotten approval from outside council as to the language, as it's proposed and as it's revised. I did have approval for the language as it was initially proposed to you, but I just, I was unable to get ahold of them today in the very short timeframe, but certainly we'll make sure that it's.
The yellow sheet on the table does have the A removed.
It does, right.
I think that before, is it for the discussion on the item? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Did you?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman McGinnis, I didn't see the signal.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment, I guess, in regards to this, over the last two weeks since we last met, and voted to send this language out so that we could potentially put it together to be put on the ballot. I've received lots of telephone calls and lots of emails from people within the community about the concern that they have that this is, if this were to be approved, that it's set in stone for five years, and we would check back in five years to determine whether or not this was an overspending on our part, or whether or not the other entities that were looking for assistance to help us balance the budget have actually complied, and I just wanted to point out that by law, we are required to review the budget every single year, and I do believe that during the course of the year, not just that, as that year period comes up, that both City Council, City Management, and City Staff will be paying very close attention to all of these issues to see how they're progressing, and that as a legislative body, we will have the ability to determine each year when we're assessing the budget, how we're going to be proceeding in terms of the millage rate for that year. So I just want people to be aware that this is something that's going to be closely watched after if it were to be approved, so that we can make sure that all of these things that we're going to be doing in conjunction are working together to balance the budget.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
You know, there's been much praise about Oakland County and the multi-year budget and the leadership from the county executive, we've heard it a number of times up here. Even though there's a multi-year budget, the budget is revisited, just as Councilmember McGinnis mentioned, every single year. Adjustments have been made, so we too are looking at a five-year plan. We're looking far out, and as with every budget, we are anticipating what will happen, but the review annually still takes place, as Councilmember McGinnis says, by law, and that's where the tweaking happens. I do want to applaud the city manager for bringing forward a number of options for us, both in the five-year plan and in the presentation that was given to us October 30. And number one on all of those has been seeking employee concessions. That has been ongoing. As you mentioned, Mayor, that's just one of a number of different strategies in order to come to grips with the drop in the revenue from the state, federal, county level. We have been working on a drop in revenue sharing since 2001. This is 2009. For years, we have been making cuts, so even looking out five years, all of the different elements working together, whether as the city manager points out, the regionalization, the streamlining, the efficiencies, approaching services differently, changing our services, and dropping some of the services. Even so, the budget will need to be revisited every year. The 1.9 initial for 2010 on the ballot will be revisited by council. It is up to 1.9. Even so, the 1.9 mil that goes into effect the first year will not yield the same amount of money for the subsequent years. That's just a fact. So as we go forward with this, again, pledge to our community to work on all different strategies to come to grips with this, that money will not be the same year after year after year. It will not yield the same amount of money. It will yield less.
Further discussion of the motion? Yes, Mayor Potem Fleming?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's been stated tonight, there's no silver bullet, but I am thrilled, and I know I've had discussions with our city manager, but to see that you guys step forward tonight, union leaders and representing a lot of employees, that you're having ongoing discussions, we really need to continue these, and I humbly request, and know that you are, you're committed to it, continue these discussions. It's not the only answer, but it's a vital component for our citizens to know what's going on, that you're willing to make concessions, and I encourage you to make, you know, be as, make as significant a concession as you can. I'm not throwing a number out there, that's for you guys to negotiate, but we know what's happening in the private sector, you know what's happening, you read the papers, and it's going to be critical to our voters to know what concessions you have made. So work in all haste with Mr. Zerlag, and you, one of you mentioned that you're going to have an announcement pretty soon, that's encouraging to me, because I think that's absolutely necessary for our voters to know. I'm not opposed to going to the voters, but we need to go to educated voters. Uneducated voters, this will fail. We're asking for a 1.9 mil increase, which is the maximum the charter will allow, okay? We need to do our homework, make sure we're not doing anything premature, I think you're doing the right things. I encourage you to continue. Just speaking to the police officers, this is personal to me, because my father was a chief of police, that's the way he made our living, retired as a chief of police, have a special place in my heart for the police, not everybody else is important, I don't want to offend anybody, but I know as police officers, when you have an officer in distress, you put your life on the line, and you go out there and you do whatever it takes. We have some young officers, if we don't get serious about concessions and about taking drastic measures or significant measures, not just wage concessions, but it starts there, we're going to have to let officers go, and nobody wants to see that. We need to keep Troy the safest city in Michigan. You guys can do a lot. It's not just coming to an officer's rescue when he's in trouble, but in economic trouble, I'm asking you as leaders and as people to step forward and make significant concessions, because that helps your fellow officers as well, because you know how this works, it's the lower seniority. We have a lot of young officers here, we would like to see them all keep their jobs, do everything we possibly, anything I can do to help those officers keep their jobs, I want to do it, because we need the safest city in Michigan. The same thing goes for the Department of Public Works, whatever, we need to keep our roads clear and safe, that's a safety issue as well, and I can say that about all the employees, we have great employees. I'm just encouraging you, and humbly requesting, please, please, work very closely with Mr. Zerlag, I know you are, this is such a critical time, we can't afford not to get this right, and we have one time, I think, to get this right, because if this were to fail, when we do go before the voters, and I think this will go before the voters, we're in a corner, we're back into a corner, and I don't know the way out, so let's make sure that we do our, do our best with concessions, educate the public, make sure we get this right. Now, on to the language that we have tonight. We have two reasons not to vote on this tonight. One is the language has not been approved, the other, we have two council people missing tonight. I think this is so important that we get this right, that we need, we need everybody speaking on what action on this council they should, they prefer to see, and I think we need to have this language right, too, I don't want to put anything forward that wouldn't be right. So I would recommend that we delay doing this tonight, I think we have another meeting on December the 7th, is that correct?
Next meeting.
Is that our next meeting? The next meeting's December the 7th. So I'm asking that to get, also, if there's some announcements that are imminent, as far as unions and negotiations, that may be something that may be available in two weeks, I don't know, but I would certainly, that would certainly be a benefit if there were things that could be made, the council made aware of, as far as concessions, it could turn a couple of weeks.
Mayor?
Further discussion of the motion? Yes, Councilwoman Slater?
Personally, I'm not willing to postpone this, because two members aren't here today. Two weeks ago, everybody knew that we would be speaking about this today, so I think if they wanted to be here for this, they could have been here. I know you changed your schedule, Mr. Fleming, to be here, and I commend you for that. The only reason I would want to postpone it is if there's an issue with the language, and I would ask the city attorney to respond to it.
Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I don't anticipate that there will be a problem, I did want to state, however, that with the revision, it has not been formally approved by outside council, so I want council to be mindful of that. If you prefer, the motion could be contingent upon receiving final approval, I mean, that's an option that you would have as well.
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
I'd like to hear from everyone about the phrase "quality of life." Is that specific enough? I know that in the presentations the city manager has been making, he has been using the term "quality of life," but in an effort to be as clear as possible as we are with this language on the ballot, I want to, us to have a conversation on whether that is specific enough. At the same time, we're talking about changing the language that we have received in our packet, which includes police, fire, to a general public safety. And again, I'd like to hear from my colleagues on both of those characterizations, public, rather than police, fire, public safety, quality of life, should it be more specific? Or perhaps, management might tell us why it should not.
I can go first if you like. Sure. The term "public safety" includes obviously the police department and the fire department. Public safety also includes public works, because we spoke about having a 24-hour protocol during certain snow events, and again, it's just to try to achieve clarity to the person in the voting booth. If you took a look at police, fire, public works, library, museum, community center, nature center, 1.9 mils is probably $8 million or so, when you take into consideration what would be allocated for the general fund, and that's but a fraction or subset of what is required for those areas, the other areas that I just mentioned. So obviously, what we did initially back in September was forecast what will happen if we did nothing, and essentially, there would be, because we can't print money, there would be a closure of the library, the museum, the nature center, the community center, and then we'd start laying off up to 50 people in the police and fire departments. We spoke about having a tiered millage, you know, one tier would be for police and fire operations, another tier would add public works, third would add everything, and it was decided by council, I believe, to have a 1.9 mil, which would essentially include everything that we spoke about coming back, not to the same degree, we're still going to privatize and regionalize and eliminate when we can. In fact, there will be some layoffs effective this month, and what I'm going to do is make notice before the end of the month to certain individuals, but to have payments to them through the first week in January, so it'll be somewhat of a severance package, even though contracts and handbooks don't call for that, I think that we could have enough of it in advance to assist our employees in that regard. It's a long answer, that's step one. Step two is to still hire a, still utilize our consultant, who is not my friend, by the way, and his name is Dick Carlisle, he's looking essentially at every department, and has agreed, because he is developing a methodology to determine if the private sector can bid, he is not going to bid because of a possible perception of an impropriety, even though there would not be. One thing else that we're doing is, as opposed to some cities that have departments bid in conjunction with the private sector, what we're saying, and I made this promise already to Mike, is that we'll go out for bids to privatize certain areas, and we'll open up those bids, and then go to the departments and see if we can match it, so we're going to give preference to our employees. In fact, we had had a meeting for the management of our golf operations, and I indicated that to those individual companies as well, that we're going to take a look at what they could do for us for essentially a turnkey operation, but first, we're going to decide if we can do it more cost-effective and house, once we see their numbers, and they had no problems with that. Back to your question, whatever you think is easier for the resident to understand, you know, 1.9 mils per se is for general fund operations, which includes all You know, 1.9 mils per se is for general fund operations, which includes all the departments that I've mentioned. 1.9 mils is not going to fund the police department, it's not going to fund the fire department, it's merely a subset of that. But there was talk about saying that you wanted to mention these departments. You can mention them if you like. Again, we'll do what you like, but I think the real reason that you wanted to include police, fire, and publics, and, and quality of life venues was that you did not want to tier the question, but wanted to have 1.9 mils to encompass all the departments, which it does. I mean, you could say 1.9 mils for general operating purposes such as police, fire, public works, you know, library, museum. If that makes you feel fine, we'll ask Lori to give that to the, her attorneys and see if that's acceptable.
Hi, Mr. Zerlag. In addition to having the ballot language for the ballot, there will be an educational piece that will come out just as when the charter amendments were on the ballot this time, and it will be provided and some of that explanation will be in there. Am I correct?
Absolutely, and we'll share that with the council as well. We're going to do that. If you vote to have the language approved tonight, the next meeting we'll have prepared for you the pamphlet indicating what a yes vote means and what a no vote means.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I was the one that, that kind of asked to have public safety inserted because of the, the issues with things other than police and fire. And I also didn't quite like the language of but not limited to...
I need to question everybody to be sure to use their mics. Some of our mics work really well and others do not work as well. Thank you.
I just felt more comfortable having the word public safety to encompass things other than police and fire, the DPW certainly, in my opinion, is a, a great part of public safety. And that wasn't mentioned in the, in the original words and I thought that this would maybe clarify that. And as I stated, I did not like the but limited to also. So I guess I can take responsibility for that.
And, and to then, to clarify your question, Council Kerwin, about whether we have a discussion more about quality of life purposes, because there will be an additional piece that will come, that will go into some of the, the details, I think that that is an important component. The reason why I think that we should vote tonight on ballot language is for two reasons. First of all, I think it sends the signal that we're moving ahead, we've been discussing it for quite some time. The second thing is, I think frankly, it'll help with negotiations with the employees on concessions. As you know, we've had interest-based bargaining for a number of years here and it's been very successful because all the parties come together with a joint vision to, to succeed. And I, I think by having this approved tonight that it sends that signal. And so that's why I, even though I, I do wish we had all seven here, I do not wish to postpone for that reason.
Your honor, if I may, that's...
Mr. Zerlag?
And that's what I'm hearing from the, the gentleman that had spoken tonight, is that they wanted to have a partnership with the council and the community. The chips that the employees will put in are concessions. The chips that the council would put in would be to have the ability to let the voters decide what kind of community they want. We've already told you what it's going to look like without a millage increase in conjunction with concessions by the employees. And it's up to you to let the, the public know or let the public decide what kind of community they want.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Well, we're not just, we're just not going to agree, but I really think we need to have this language right. And again, I think we need to have the other two here. But I don't want that to distract from the bargaining. I mean, I don't want to send the wrong message. We want to get this to the people, we want to do it right, want to do it right one time. So I won't be supporting this tonight, but I do wish the discussions to continue and I would like to have all council weigh in on this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor, there was not a second placed on that motion and so...
I know, I, that's, I, I wanted to ask you, we didn't, don't have a mover or a second, do we? We have a mover, but we didn't have a second.
We had a mover, but since such time has elapsed and there's been discussion, it would be most proper to restate the motion and get a second.
Right. Would you like to restate the motion? And, and, you know, I'm going to ask that you read the entire motion, if you would, please. Councilman Slater?
I'd also like to add that it not be approved unless outside counsel reviews the language and approves the language. So I, I would like this contingent on approval from outside counsel.
Okay. Would you like to read starting with this off?
I can, I can resolve that the city, Troy City Council approves as to form the following proposed millage question language for the special election scheduled by the city council, resolution number 2009-11-328 for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2010. City of Troy General Operating Millage Proposal. The city council would be authorized to levy up to 1.9 mils with the successful passage of the following question. Shall the city of Troy levy new additional millage of up to 1.9 mils against all taxable property for a five-year period of time, 2010 through 2014, for general operating purposes including public safety and quality of life purposes? 1.9 mils are equal to $1.90 on each $1,000 of taxable value. If approved, the additional millage levied will raise approximately $9,129,000 the first year it is levied.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as written and appro, and read? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Oh, no, with a contingency.
I'm sorry?
With the contingency.
With the contingency that, excuse me, I meant it, with the contingency that the outside counsel approves the ballot language. Because we do have certain legalities with ballot language that we must have approved. Yes. Mr. Zerlag signaling to...
Okay.
Mr. Zerlag, you want to speak first and then Councilman Kerwin or the other way?
I'll have one of my bosses speak first.
Okay. Councilman Kerwin?
I just wish that Mayor Protem would, would join in support for this resolution. I know that during the campaign, two things were very important, that I heard the Mayor Protem speak a number of times. At the end of the campaign, I saw protect police. And I think that the city manager just made the point that unless there is additional mils levied, that's a promise that cannot be made, it cannot be kept. And the second thing is that longing for good roads, we realize that good roads have a yearly value on them of $5 million. Even if we take bits and pieces from the current budget, we cannot year after year come up with good roads unless there is additional revenue. It can't be peace brought. It's the fuel that runs the engine of providing roads, which is a fundamental service, including those roads which the county is no longer taking care of. So for those two things, I implore you to consider supporting this. I think it sends a strong member, message to not only our employees, but to the community at large, that we recognize a need and that we are heroic enough to realize that this is the staff that it will take, a partnership of all, including those at the table. Thank you.
Mr. Zerlag?
I was just going to mention that if the outside attorney approves of the language, then there's no problem. If there's not an approval, needs to be a modification of some sort, you have three options. You know, one is that you can wait until next time we meet in December. Another one is that you could call a special meeting. And a third is that you could also adopt the resolution that was before you and approved by outside counsel as a fallback resolution. It's up to you. But I can't think of any other option besides those three.
Councilman Kerwin?
I believe that this language though covers it because it says resolves that the Troy City Council approves as to form. Does that not give us enough?
It's up to Lori.
Mrs. Blum?
You certainly can see the language if, if it is not approved. Again, I, I assume that it will be approved by outside legal counsel, but assuming that it's not, there will be enough time to get it to you by the December 15th deadline. It's going to make it a little more difficult to do the brochure, but certainly you could do that. You also have the option of calling a special meeting as well. I would really not recommend that, you know, approving a, a second resolution. I would really recommend that, you know, as it is now and as the resolution is stated, you are protected in that if it does not meet the attorney's specifications, then it will be brought back to you.
Further discussion? Yes, Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yeah, just to clarify, I do intend to protect our police. I want to keep every policeman we possibly can. That's what I said, that's what I mean to do. I intend to keep Troy a, a safe city and do everything possible to do that. We do need to maintain our roads, I think we can do all that and will do all of that. There's no silver bullet, no one thing to do, but I've stated my position tonight and why I do not, would not support this, doing this tonight. But in no way should that send a message to any police or DPW or any other worker that I'm not supporting you because I am. And I don't want that to be misconstrued, but I think we need to have all council here voting on this. I do have some concern about the language, but I do intend to protect the police and I'll, I'll fight for you guys and for all, all the workers in the city. But we do need some concessions. I think getting those things first will help, help move us along. I know it's the chicken or the egg, but rest assured, I do intend to protect you to the extent that my vote can.
Further discussion?
Your honor?
Yes?
So you, you are then going to take the option of waiting two weeks if there's a problem?
No. I'm not, I don't know about the rest.
Then would you call a special meeting now in case there is a problem?
Well, could we first have the vote on the item?
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Yes, Councilman Slater?
I'd like to make a resolution that if the outside counsel does not approve the language we just approved, that we set a special meeting for next Monday?
That would be the 30th? Is that the 30th?
Mrs. Bartholomew, is that the 30th?
It is.
Yes, it is.
November, Monday, November 30th?
With the time and the...
At 7:30, 2009.
In the council?
In the council chambers.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman Kerwin, that should the, that we set a special meeting of the Troy City Council for 7:30 on, in the Troy City Council chambers, on November 30th, should, should outside counsel not approve the ballot language?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Mrs. Blum, was that sufficient?
Just for the purpose of discussing the ballot language.
For the purpose of approving ballot language.
Madam Mayor?
Discussion. Councilman Kerwin?
I think we need to recognize that it's possible that not everyone will be at our meetings. As well-intentioned as people were coming tonight, things happen. So it's, as we are at any council meeting, it's those who show up who ultimately vote to make these decisions, so. But that's an observation. I think it's an important one for those who are thinking that we need seven in order to make decisions. We haven't had seven many times this year, but yet business has to go forward. We need to move forward.
Further discussion on the special meeting? Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Counselmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council is going to take a 10-minute break. We will return at, oh, nine minutes before. (pause) 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 Two minutes passed the appointed time, so I said we'd be back, council's back in session. And for our next item, which is the recovery zone facility bond for North American Bank Card project plan, Mr. Zerly indicated he has a staff member who wishes to speak on this.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like Pamela Valenteck, our economic development specialist, to give a synopsis of this.
Hi, how are you? Nice to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As Mary, my guest, actually pointed out to me, I come bearing good news this evening. I am very pleased to present to you the opportunity to provide continued support to one of Troy's fastest growing companies. North American Bank Card is a privately held company that provides point of purchase payment services to companies all over the country. They are a leader in the electronic payment industry and have experienced double digit growth since their inception seventeen years ago. Originally located on Big Beaver Road, the company has been in Troy since its existence in 1992. In March of 2008, North American Bank Card was outgrowing its space and was looking for a facility to house their long-term plans. The company could have gone anywhere and they were considering going out of state. But working with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation in Oakland County, we were able to attract their investment to Troy. They purchased 250 Stevenson, which is 150,000 square foot office building, and they have been moving their operations into this new home. Today, we will be talking about the recovery zone facility bond. This is a program that was established out of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act that provides low-cost financing to private businesses that are boosting our economy and creating jobs within the community that provides financing to help these businesses and make investments in real property and equipment. Oakland County received 155 million dollars this year to spur the economy in Oakland County, and I am very pleased to say that this is the first project that will be receiving monies from this program. As you can see from the project plan that was attached, this 2.5 million dollar bond will cover renovations to North American Bank Card's building and will allow them to purchase additional equipment. Your approval of the project plan shows your support for this company, North American Bank Card, who has invested millions of dollars in the city of Troy in property and is expected to grow to 1,500 employees within the next 12 years. I want to introduce to you two people who are involved in this project. Howard Moroff, he is the CFO of North American Bank Card, and he is prepared to answer any questions that you might have about the company itself. And then also Mary Lainhauser. She is the supervisor of financial services of Oakland County, who is responsible for the oversight of the issuance of this bond, and she is here prepared to answer any technical questions that you might have regarding this program. I open it up to you to ask any questions at this time, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I think that the last sentence in the memo to us is very important, given what we're going through here in Troy with our revenue stream. And so I will read that sentence, and then I, I think they may have something more they want to say about it. It says that EDC of Oakland County is the issuer of this bond, and the city of Troy will not be financially responsible for the recovery zone facility bonds. I think that's very important that we stress that to the community.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Mayor Protim Fleming?
Yeah, ma'am. Just wanted to confirm, reading your letter here as, as well, and this with the benefit of those who are, who are watching, that you currently have 290 employees and this action will enable you to hire an additional 50 employees in the near future? You have a timeframe on that?
That is correct. The investment will help us re- retrofit-
When I come up closing my mic there?
retrofit the third floor, which has been left unfinished from the point that Collins Nateven left the building, as well do some work in the, in the first floor. That will allow us to grow to at least about 350, 370 employees over the next year or so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Kerrwin?
Included also the county commissioners who gave complete support for this, and I'm pleased to have that there. And just a reminder for the 15 new employees that we have wonderful housing stock right now in the city of Troy. Or we also have wonderful workers right here in the city of Troy as well.
And, and be sure to remind them, if they're coming on board for the winter, that, as you know, because you've been here-
Yes.
Troy always has their roads plowed the best, first, and at the cheapest rate. Can't say it enough, you know, I don't think we're going to have a snowy winter like last year, but, you know, that was 42 inches, and I think we're due to have 32. But, you know, it could come in one of those storms like last year where we had 12 inches, the first snow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would someone like to move the resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Kerrwin?
Resolved that Troy City Council has reviewed and hereby approves the attached Economic Development Corporation of the County of Oakland project plan for North American Bank Card Incorporated, which is located at 250 Stevenson Highway in the city of Troy, is provided for in MCL 125.1608, the Economic Development Corporation Act, Public Act 1974, number 338. And be it further resolved, the Troy City Council hereby directs the city clerk to forward a certified copy of this resolution to the Oakland County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerrwin, seconded by Councilwoman, Mayor Protim Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. Council members, do you have any items that you wish to have removed? Mayor Protim Fleming?
I six.
I six? Any others? Yes. Could we have a resolution then for all items?
Resolved that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented with the exception of item I six, which shall be considered after consent agenda items I as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protim Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Kerrwin, that we approve all the consent agenda items with the exception of I six, that will be considered after the, this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mayor Protim Fleming, you asked for I six?
Yes, I want to bring it to council's attention and to public that the request for the, the new SDM license for 5997 Livenoy, the proprietor of this establishment made a contribution to my campaign, I believe, of $100, I believe, as I recall. And that certainly, in my opinion, has no effect on my decision-making ability for this, this license, but I need to disclose that, and it's council's pleasure as to whether I can participate in the vote or not. Just want to be above board. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anyone else have any comments on this? And when they redid the gas station there, they, they, there was that indication that they wanted to move ahead with this, and they seem to be doing well, and it's a well-run gas station. And I think it'll work out well. I'm sure they're going to be very stringent with their liquor license because they know how tough we are here, and, but I just can't let it go by without mentioning it again because we, we really feel that everyone that has any kind of a license, SDM or SDD, any kind, that they have to hold to the standards of our community, which are very stringent. So I'm sure they'll do that. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Um, Madam-
Oh, do we have a, a resolution? I don't think we have one.
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby considers for approval the request from Square Lake Livenoy Business Incorporated for a new SDM license with gas pumps to be located at 5997 Livenoy, Troy, Michigan, 48098, Oakland County. MLCC request number 518636, above all others, and be it further resolved that it is the consensus of this legislative body that the application be recommended, above all others, for issuance.
Support.
And are you going to, do they agree?
Yes, I am going to do the agreement. Whereas Troy City Council deems it necessary to enter agreements with applicants for liquor licenses for the purpose of providing civil remedies to the city of Troy and the event licensees fail to adhere to the Troy codes and ordinances, therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves an agreement with Square Lake Livenoy Business Incorporated for a new SDM license with gas pumps to be located at 5997 Livenoy, Troy, Michigan, 48098, Oakland County. MLCC request number 518636, and hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the document, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerrwin, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve A and B, the new license and the agreement. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Kerrwin?
I would just simply like to point out that we have in attendance at our meeting tonight Anne Komisky, who is the executive director of the Troy Community Coalition. Perhaps it would be a great opportunity after this for you to meet with Anne Komisky, and she, she would have some wonderful advice on careful enforcement of this SDM license, which is of paramount importance, not only to the sitting council members, but to this community. Thank you.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I seven, designation of Act 51 Street Administrator? We have a resolution? Pardon?
Mayor, I'm sorry, before you move on, just been pointed out that there is an error in the address of that last resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. What is the? Pardon?
Correct. Should be 5977 rather than 5997, which is a-
Do we need an amendment, Mrs. Bartholomew?
A motion to ratify with the corrected address would be asked for.
Move to ratify with the correct address?
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerrwin, that we ratify the correct address with the correct address. Discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Sorry about the error in the address. It should be correct now. Okay, designation of Act 51 Street Administrator, do we have a resolution? Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor- Thank you, Mayor Protim.
You are happy.
Okay, sorry. I went back in the regular agenda. Memorandums and future council agenda items, council referrals, council comments. Councilwoman Kirwin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that during public, during, under the, in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, really people can speak about anything, whether it's factual or non-factual. And tonight, we really had some information that was not factual at all. One of the comments made during public communication regarded public communication, and there were accusations that we have taken away an opportunity to speak during public hearings. However, Madam Mayor, I know that you read out loud and called to the attention of everyone in attendance that that is one of the things that will always be available to the public. And that's one of the bullet points that is on page two in the city council agenda. It has prominence on the website. I like the new font that's used, so that it is pointed out, that we have heard from many of our residents gratitude that now they can come and be heard early in a council meeting. That works both well, both for young, the young who we saw here tonight, also for our older residents who were really taxed by waiting until 10:30 or 11:00 to speak on certain items, and also for those who have a job in the morning and need to get home. So hearing from everyone today on many different subjects, those who spoke were finished by 8:30, and some stayed a while, and then some simply scooted off so that they could be home and either watch the meeting on cable, or could prepare for the next day, our children to study for school the next day. So I think that it seems to be working well, and people have that opportunity to speak on anything they would like, on the agenda, off the agenda. They don't have to wait until a certain time to speak. They can speak on a number of different things, as we saw someone who spoke on three different things. There was also some mention about one of our nonprofits, a fine nonprofit association that was on our agenda tonight. A member of the public, I think, defamed, Pink Rose Inspirational Foundation Incorporated, a wonderful organization and a member of the nonprofit network, works hard for women with breast cancer. And I know that that's certainly on our minds through October and at this time, and I applaud the work of Pink Rose and that foundation, and for all that they're doing for women with breast cancer, and wish them well on their fundraiser. So I wanted to make that correction. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other council comments? I'd like to make one comment, and that is, in the section where public can comment on an agenda item or items that are not on the agenda, I'm sure that the viewing public, an educated public in Troy, understands that when they speak, it is from the viewpoint of the speaker, and it is their comments that they are making. It is not necessarily always accurate, nor is it always kind. And it is unfortunate sometimes that comments that are made in the public comment section of a meeting are not of the same tone as we try to do up here at the table. And I notice as I observe, for example, I'm watching C-SPAN with their, with Congress debating issues, and even though they differed on the issues, they were always very polite, very precise in the fact that they yielded the floor back and were very formal in their comments. And I think that it behooves everyone, whether they are members that are elected or people of the public when they come to speak, that they try to speak in a manner that represents our community well. And I would hope that we would have more of that and less of negatives. Those are my council comments for the evening. Any others? We do have a closed-session item that has been requested, so we'll need a resolution It's before us on the last page of our agenda.
Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Be it resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268, parent E, pending litigation, City of Troy versus Century Plaza and City of Troy versus JMT Properties LLC.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilmember Slater, that we approve the motion to meet in closed session. Following this, discussion? Vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schelling?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Therefore, we're in adjournment, and we will be in closed session in the other room.